Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order for the Nottingham Board of Select for Monday, January 4th, 2021. Congratulations, we made it. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright.
The agenda up here.
Do we have any? That was like, we did that last meeting, right?
I didn't have any of my packet.
I didn't either, so.
No, nothing new.
Uh, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for, uh, December 28th?
Motion. Motion to approve the minutes for, as written, for December 28th, 2000.
I'll second that.
Alright, we got a motion and a second. Ready?
You wanna call for all in favor?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dunus.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Warren.
I don't have December 3rd as approved, but maybe that's a mistake on my end, but...
I'd have to go back and even look.
I still have December 3rd as unofficial. This is the continuation of the 11:30 meeting, so maybe it doesn't need to be approved then?
Oh, was that the one where the power went out and we had to push home?
Yeah.
Okay, um... I thought we, alright. I thought we had already approved those, but...
Yeah, I was with you, but I didn't think we were behind on any.
I can look back and see.
Oh, let's go through the assigned boards and committees. Budget, we just met. Again, it's busy. And again, a lot of topics was about what we're talking about tonight, which I'm sure in the upcoming Warren articles. And justifying some of the school budgets. But again, it was pretty typical for a meeting that lasted for about three hours, so. Yeah, they're not getting any shorter. Um, but nothing really too exciting to report or anything that was dramatic that people needed to know or heard about. Uh, planning board?
Uh, planning board, we don't meet until January 13th.
Perfect, CIP?
Um, well, last week I covered our first meeting, which went pretty well. Um, we still need to hear from the school board on their CIP plan. And as I understand it, they're gonna present to the budget committee, I think, next week.
Yep.
Um, so then I'll, we'll get them scheduled, uh, once that's completed.
Uh, 300th?
I don't have anything else. Is Steve on with us?
Nothing, nothing was shaking.
Okay. And Marson's still covered in snow, Donna, right?
Yeah, it is, John, absolutely, but, um, I think now that we're kind of like past the holidays and stuff, it's a good time for us to, um, get the fundraising committee going again. I know that we had had a number four, um, backstops and because we kind of delayed and hadn't moved forward on it, the, the cost had gone up. So I'm gonna talk to Courtney about kind of reconvening that fundraising committee and see if we can focus on just getting some money for those backstops, which are really important for, um, you know, not even, not just for the flow of the game for, for safety as well. So we're gonna see what we can do there.
Do we have roughly a price on what those costs? A two-tailing fence, like what's at the, the fields by the center now?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't wanna be held to this because I don't remember exactly.
If you don't feel like, just...
Yeah, let me, let me not throw, let me not throw out a number. I, I think it had gone up by like 10% since we had originally talked to them.
Okay. Uh, Chris, town minister report. Chris, you there?
Sorry, learning my new toys here. Uh, I don't have much for you. Um, the fire department's back fully staffed, uh, everybody's okay. Highway had a busy weekend. No issues, uh, nothing else to report.
Alright, moving on. Uh, we didn't have anything for assessing, did we? I can't see the bottom of that.
Oh, sorry.
No, nothing, nothing for assessing this week.
Perfect, so let's get on to the fun thing about the town meeting.
Tony, do you see, uh, oh, Bonnie, Bonnie made it in, okay, she was struggling for a bit there.
Yeah, Bonnie is, Bonnie is here.
How do you wanna start off with anything, Chris, or you want Bonnie to start off with?
I can just tee it up by saying, uh, you left off your discussion, uh, with Bonnie a couple of weeks ago. She had some conversations with the school board and, uh, has learned more. We've both been talking to each other and the lawyers and, um, uh, maybe I'll, I'll turn it over to her and then jump back in when it's time for the select board to start thinking about its decision path.
I guess jump in.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, I have been discussing it with Chris and Nicholas Chong Yan and reading the guidance from NHMA. And, um, basically, we have three choices. Um, as far as the deliberative session goes, one is to hold a meeting as, as usual, uh, face-to-face meeting, using the guidelines that are in place. And as I said last time, while there is, yes, a mask mandate now, it expires on January 15th. So will the governor extend it? Everyone is hoping that he does, but we won't know till we get there, apparently. So that's the first option. Um, Chris and I discussed the first option, uh, some time ago in terms of the physical, um, plant, the physical space that we have at the school and would it be enough to accommodate an in-person meeting if we were crazy enough to consider an in-person meeting? And there is some question in both of our minds whether or not we could even fit in the school if more than 125 people showed up. And you can say that people don't come to deliberatives, but they were deliberatives, but this is our first one, so we don't really have any way to gauge it. Uh, number one, and number two, if there, if people were not required to wear masks, I suppose you as a board might be able to require it, but I'm not sure about that. Um, Nicholas Chong Yan seemed to believe we could, but the last time we had a town meeting, we couldn't. And, um, if, if it ends up that we have one and there are people allowed to be in there unmasked, we will need a new moderator to do it, 'cause I, I won't do that. I've already been on the frontlines enough times. And when people are in a room for hours and hours, that's really the, the dangerous part. I mean, what do the public health people tell you? Wash your hands, wear a mask, and don't gather in groups over five. So that's just my two cents, but as I said to Chris, I, I'm willing to work with the board and do really whatever everybody thinks is the best for our town. Within my own limitations, which I, which I just mentioned. The second option is to have a virtual meeting per House Bill 1129. I'm probably sure all of you have read at least the guidance that's come out of New Hampshire Municipal Association regarding House Bill 1129. Um, and that is sort of a three-step process instead of a two-step process, 'cause normally we would have a deliberative session and then have voting. And in this, um, procedure, we would have a virtual session where information was given out to the public, to the people who attend by Zoom. Um, and then there would be an amount of time when they could respond to the articles that were explained and, um, delivered to them at the first meeting. And they could send that data to the governing body, which is you people, the select board, in the case of the town. And you would decide whether or not to make any amendments to the warrant articles, depending on the feedback that you receive from the citizens. So that's, of course, placing a large amount of trust in the select board to do what they think the citizens really seem to want. And, and I know that it's harder, it's probably going to be harder to determine that, without any kind of voting process. However, um, it's also true that anybody can send you, um, suggestions and they, they do not have to be registered voters. But I think it would be understood that you would probably give more weight to those suggestions made by registered voters. Anyway, um, and then the third step of, the, the third step of that, although the second step would be, you would meet, we would all meet together again virtually and you board members would go over the warrant and explain any amendments that you did make or didn't make. Um, and then we would have a voting component, which would, we would be required to have a drive-in voting for this, uh, if we, if we select this form of, of meeting. Um, and Chris thinks we could do it pretty well in the fire department building. Um, we could also, at the same time, have, um, an in-person voting polling area if we wish. I've discussed that with the Attorney General Representative. I mean, he is, he's an Assistant Attorney General, Nick Chong Yan. And, um, he said there's no, there's no provision in the law that restricts us from having the in-person polling, so he thinks that would be a fine thing for us to do, um, if we wanted to do both. Um, then, so that's the second option. And the third option is to postpone the meeting to a date certain in the future. Now, I, I just wanna make a little, um, a little clarification about who does what. The select board is empowered to decide to use the virtual procedure. The moderator is not. It's your decision. Um, moving the, moving the meeting to a date certain in the future is the moderator's. In the moderator's powers, not in yours. So we would all have to be on the same page about both of those things, but... So we could move it into the future, hoping that the virus is under control by whatever time we would have to do it, which I think Chris thinks is by the end of August. I mean, there's no guarantees that the virus will be under control by the summer. There's been a lot of optimistic talk that, oh, now we have vaccines and it's all gonna be under control by the summer. However, if you read through the, between the lines, you will see that they've not vaccinated anywhere near as many people as they originally thought they would have vaccinated by now. So whether that can happen by the summer, in my opinion, from reading what I've read, is dubious. So will we have herd immunity by the summer? Maybe we will, maybe we won't. So I don't know, I suppose at that point, we could do the virtual meeting if it's still unsafe. Um, so that's, that's another wrinkle. As far as I can tell, it would still be alright, but I'm not really... There's no, there's no, there's no deadline in the law that says when you have to decide, um, to do it. I suppose, I suppose if it's postponed, but that is not an exact question that I've, I've asked Nick Chong Yan. I have read the latest guidance from NHMA. And they are, they included a note that the legislature is being asked to clarify the 72-hour clause that's in the law, if you're all familiar with that, in the law about postponing it, um, that moderators can do. Nick Chong Yan told me that as far as the Attorney General's office is concerned, if we picked a date certain in the future, they would consider that to be done in 72-hour increments. And they don't have a problem with it not being laid out in the law. And they're really the people we have to worry about as far as compliance goes. So if the legislature doesn't get it together, unless Nick gets overruled, I think that's still very much a possibility. So I guess my idea tonight is just to have people talk about the pros and cons. Um, the cons of in-person meeting are all out there in the news. The other con that I haven't mentioned is that I believe it would disenfranchise a lot of elderly people and a lot of, um, people who were, for some reason or other, really susceptible, uh, high-risk people. So aside from the fact that I personally don't wanna run a meeting these, in these, this time, personally, um, there's that consideration that a lot of people would not be able to attend. A lot of our, a lot of our older people, many of whom come to these meetings anyway. So, um, that's kind of the end of my spiel. If anybody has any questions, I, I have talked to Nick a lot. And, um, I've read everything I can read. There, there very well probably will be some minor changes between now and then, some more guidance from the Attorney General's office. They were hoping to have that out by the end of the year, but of course, it's not ready. They're, they're known for...
We have residents that don't even, probably even have internet or, and, and like you said, some of these people look forward to this now that it's, it's gonna be different. But I mean, my thing would be that I, I wanna see whether people can participate in the process. So if that means in August, I, I'm fine with that. I don't know what everybody else, that's the way I feel.
You could, so you could all, uh, meeting with, uh, with computers set up for people if you, if you find somehow that there are a lot of people without access to the internet. I personally don't know anybody in this town, but I don't know all the elderly people and there probably likely are some that, that don't use the internet, but I don't really know.
So Bonnie, there's three options for us, right?
Three options.
Regular full meeting.
Yeah, with whatever safeguards are in place at the time of the meeting, we don't know what they are.
Correct. The second one is the one you were mentioning, House Bill 1129, the virtual meeting setup, where there's a lot of work involved in that way of doing it.
There's a lot of work in all of the ways.
Lot of time.
The least work is the normal way, I, I think, if you ask those of us who are election officers, 'cause we know how to do that.
Oh, yeah, yep. Again, I'm just going over to make sure that, you know, 'cause I mean, that one you were talking, it's almost like a four-step process to get that done.
Instead of a two-step, it's a three-step instead of a two-step.
Well, you said, you know, we do the virtual meeting over, then we respond time, then we have a second meeting, then we have a third meeting to vote on it. So it looks like those four steps. And then the third option is to postpone it. Now, we can postpone it till April, we don't have to wait till August. There's, I mean, if everything's looking good in April or the beginning, what's the downside of postponing it? Like, I mean, obviously, I understand what other people might...
So that, that's not my province, John. I mean, Chris is the one who can speak to that. We did it last year. I don't know what kind of entanglements it, it places on the town if we don't have a budget passed, if we don't have this passed, I don't know if we...
Do you mind going over what some of the problems that'll be consistent? So people that are here tonight can understand what postponing might be?
Well, just let me jump in, and yeah, yeah, I'd like to hear that, but just let me jump in. That's what we did last year, and the budget implications weren't that big of a deal, right? We were able to proceed without having a budget that was approved until June, so...
I was more just doing this so that people could understand that are online right now.
Yeah, no, I agree, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, John, John, um, the, well, the, the first, the, the first concern uh, is perhaps more theoretical, and that is that you are effectively extending your terms. You know, there's, you're, you're putting off the election of officers, so you have to say that and say that's what you're doing, you're gonna stay in office, whether the voters have that in mind or not. Anybody that's in office will stay in office, um, longer than was originally intended, so, um, that may or may not be a thing. Uh, in practical terms for the town, um, what, in the, in the absence of a budget, we would just act as if we were using, uh, last year's budget, which is what we're doing today. We, we are in between January 1st and town meeting, so we always just act as if we have the same authority as the prior year. In practical terms for the town, uh, the biggest worries are, um, uh, the question on the dump truck that will be on the warrant. Uh, if we make a late decision on that, it'll probably be too late to, um, get the truck for the winter of 21, 22. And we're not sure that the truck that we're replacing is gonna live through two more winters, so that's a, that's our number one practical concern. And our, our road maintenance projects would get pushed back, um, as they did this year. A, a delay, but not a crisis. So, uh, in practical terms, those are the things that we would deal with. They're, they're manageable, they're not fatal. I would suggest that you talk to the school board about the implications of a delay. They, they don't have to do the same thing that you do, um, but with everything they have going on, uh, a, an extended delay may, may complicate things for them. We've, we've tried to approach this as let's do everything together just for simplicity and for, so the voters can stay on top of everything. Uh, so I'd suggest you talk to them about delay and see what impact that would have on them.
Well, if we did wait till April or, or the beginning of May, which is not too, I mean, I know it's January, but five months away, isn't there a possibility of holding this outside?
I don't know about April, it's a little chilly then.
Well, it's not February, so we can look at it that way.
Yes, there is, yes, the, we'd have to figure it out, but yes.
So I mean, when we, when we talk about dates, we don't have to think this is gonna be August. I mean, and delay the whole process seven months or eight months. I mean, we can talk about just delaying it four and seeing where we sit, or three, or how, you know, whatever, depending what the weather looks like, could be an early spring, we don't know.
Can I say a couple of things that, um, haven't been brought up by anybody yet? And that is that if we choose the virtual procedure, um, there is a question on the ballot. The first question on the ballot is, do you, the citizen, you, the voter, approve of this method? So that's like a circuit breaker that keeps the selectmen from doing any, you know, fast talking stuff. And it, if, if the citizens were to reject it, because they do lose some control over amending, or they lose control over amending the budgets, um, the articles, I mean, um, if we do the Zoom form. Um, but at the same time, all of the election of officers would not be thrown out. The whole ballot would be thrown out except for election of officers, and I believe those things that are not debated, like zoning amendments and things like, like that. So the last time, you know, the difference is we were in town meeting and we had the, uh, we had the, um, voting before the meeting, uh, the voting of officers and things that are on the ballot that are not debated at town meeting. So those things were all set and, and, um, there was nobody sitting in office who, whose term was up and who, who either didn't wanna do it anymore or was beaten by somebody else.
Wait, let me make sure I understood that, Bonnie. What, what you're saying is that we could still have, so we would have the ballot voting that would give voters the circuit breaker to say we don't approve of this process as it relates to the budget?
And it relates to the warrant.
It's the warrant versus the election positions, 'cause they have a warrant, right?
That's right, that's right. So if you keep in mind, you know, that the articles on the warrant are not all monetary, but primarily.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the articles on the ballot, 'cause the warrant gets voted on at town meeting.
Yeah.
And the articles on the ballot, which we always did before town meeting, are basically the officers, um, I think zoning amendments, and there might be a couple of other things that I'm not really familiar with. Chris might know better than me, um, that, that are not debated in the meeting anyway. So if we were to do that and the citizens rejected this form of decision-making for this, this temporary form of decision-making, we would still have the officers in place for the next year.
And then I apologize if you said this, but so suppose they reject it, then what's the next step after that?
Then we start all over, because everything on the ballot that would have been discussable at the deliberative is thrown out.
So does that mean we then schedule another deliberative and vote for those things? 'Cause it's not like we're gonna wait a year, right?
Well, I would imagine that would be our only other option at that point, is to schedule... It would be the same as, just as if we were postponing it, only...
Okay.
We would have, we'd have part of the voting done and the school could have their part done, that's the other piece of it. And I don't know anything about how this impacts the school, how postponing it would. And I'm sure there are school board members here tonight who will speak to that.
Okay.
Yeah, Donna, you could, the board of selectmen could, uh, if this, in the scenario you described, where the, the procedure gets nullified, um, the officers, the new officers would take office. Uh, last year's budget would govern, last year's operating budget would govern, and all of the other warrant articles would be null and void, so the board of selectmen could either choose to let them all go and just run on the operating budget for the year, or have another meeting and vote on them, uh, with a different procedure.
Thank you, Chris. Well, maybe it's time to invite school board members to speak to...
Bonnie, can I, Bonnie, can I, um, just, uh, add one thing for the, in a way of clarification for the people who are here that have read the law? Um, and that is, what Bonnie's saying is we would still hold the two, um, virtual deliberative sessions, sessions. And at the third session, when we vote, when it's on the ballot, that's when it's on the ballot. So the people don't vote on whether or not they're, we're gonna do this process first. We do this process and only after the two meetings are held and we get to the, to the, um, the ballot piece, it's the first question on the ballot. So if it fails on that ballot, that's when we would have to make those decisions. Um, and I just, it, it gets a little complicated and I just wanted to, you know, to make a point of clarification for that.
Does anybody on the school board wanna say anything?
Hi, it's Carol Martin, um, Stu Levinson's on as well. And, um, as the school board, we had not discussed the possibility of postponing. Um, so we have a meeting, a board meeting on Wednesday, we'll be discussing this issue again. Um, I think there would certainly be concerns about postponing as late as August, but I don't know if it's possible for us to postpone to like April or May, um, because our fiscal year starts July 1st, so it may actually be feasible. Um, so, Stu, I don't know if you wanna jump in, that wasn't something we specifically talked about, I don't think.
Uh, I, I concur with your, with your interpretation. I, I know we planned to take it up on, on Wednesday. Um, we do have a bond article, so I think that complicates things a little bit for us. We also have a withdrawal article, um, that complicates it. I think those are the two. And I think there's a little, I guess, just thinking through it, there's a little confusion. I mean, a deliberative session is just a vote as to what moves forward to the ballot. And then I guess the third piece of this process would be the actual voting, which would be completely nullified, if I understand it, if the voters don't feel comfortable with what has transpired up to that point. So nothing would be voted on, apparently we would, we would have default budgets, which for us is not as bad, because our default budget is higher, but really those other warrant articles, I think, have timelines associated and that could be an issue.
Yeah, our understanding was that you cannot have a, a, a new second meeting and a redo of the deliberative if they, that process gets voted down. Um, you're, you're stuck with what you have left, I guess, which is the default budget.
Hey, Stu, what's the nuances with the bond article? How, how does that impact all of this?
Well, we are, um, we are working on it ourselves at the board level. We have, uh, Bond Council on board now who will be assisting us, but because of the emergency, several, several emergency orders, we likely won't find out until after March if we're on the list for building aid. And we have a construction manager hired and a timeline that was geared toward, uh, July 1st to start. So that would be a real issue.
Yeah, no, I mean, um, process-wise and the way that voters weigh in on bond articles.
We'll have a bond hearing, which we've, uh, just... We'll have a bond hearing, which we've uh just posted today for a bond hearing, which will occur on the 13th.
And be virtual or be live?
That will be virtual.
Yeah.
We will come in virtually, just like this, and we'll have a whole hearing, a presentation. People will weigh in, just like a typical hearing. And then the bond will be placed on the ballot, and after the vote, that's when all of your checklists come in line and, and so forth, with a lot of things that have to be done around the bond. We have certifications that need to occur from the moderator, um, from the, just a whole list of things that will have to happen.
So, so in terms of process for bond approval, then there's really no difference, other than it's the hearings virtual versus in person.
I think we could, I, we have a, I mean, we could do, I guess, a, a, a meeting in person, but it was recommended that we just go ahead and do virtual, so that more.
No, yeah, yeah. So I, I, I mean, the process isn't changed in the sense that there's a hearing.
There's a hearing, and then it's a a warrant, and then a vote, and then we get into our normal deliberative and, and um second session voting.
Okay.
But a lot of deadlines associated with that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Can I say something? Or I, I actually have a question, um, which the school piece has brought up. Um, I guess I just assumed that if the citizens rejected the virtual meeting, that we would then have some other form of meeting, but it sounds like, Chris, do you know, do we, are we then stuck with the default budget, and that's the end of our meeting for that year? Or do, or can we then, should I take this question to Nick Chong, Chong Yanet?
Um, in, in HB, in HB 1129, um, the, uh, yes, in, uh, chapter four, um, the first article of, on the alternative balance shall ask whether voters approve these optional procedures. If they are not approved, all other warrant articles shall be dim disapproved. Um, however, the election of officers, et cetera, will be, still be effective. Um.
Sounds like a done deal.
Right, but then it goes on to say, uh, if, provided that if the operating budget warrant article is not approved, the governing body may vote to convene a meeting before September 1st. Um, I don't know. So there, there's, there seems to be a clear path to adopting a budget in a later meeting, but it doesn't say specifically that you could introduce other articles. So that's a question we'll have to explore.
You wanna do that?
Yep.
I'll go to the town attorney. Or Steve Buckley.
That, that's similar, I believe, to the, the usual procedures. If you, if you, if your operating budget fails, um, uh, and the governing body uh wants to try something again, there is a provision in law uh where they can ask for another meeting. Uh, we haven't chased any of that, but that exists in, in other law too.
I do think one other thing for the school board is that where we do have some unusual, if you will, articles, um, hearing, um, citizen voter input on those, you know, is probably critical.
I, you know, I'd say that's my biggest concern um with the virtual meeting is that feedback, right, from the voters, you know, their, their ability to discuss and, you know, the, the transparency of having that discussion, hearing what everyone else has to say, right? Uh, you know, a lot of times other people's questions uh bring up uh points that other folks may not have thought of, and that spurs more conversation and more questions and more debate, and um, we're gonna lose a lot of that if we do this virtual thing. And I would want to see, I mean, if we have to do it, we have to do it, but I, you know, I would want everybody, you know, I would feel better about it if everybody knew what everyone else's input was, even if we, you know, documented it before that second event where everybody would vote, right? Um, so, you know, that, that said, you know, this, this person, you know, made this point about this, this warrant article, and that person suggested an amendment to say this and, and, and that, you know, to modify, you know, warrant article X to read this instead of that, you know, we, you know, every, everybody that wants to have input on an article should have it, and everyone else should be aware of what that person, that person's input is, and what their amendments or their questions, or their, you know, their points of debate are. Um, and I, and I'm not sure how we're gonna accomplish that virtually or technologically. I don't know how we're gonna accomplish that in a comprehensive way that where, where everyone is gonna have the same comfort level as they would in an in-person meeting, right? That, that's my, my big concern.
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling with that too, Tony. Uh, I really am. Um, just because, you know, uh, it, to me, and I, I, I get that, you know, we have the opportunity to kind of present to the townspeople, and then, you know, take input electronically or via phone or whatever, and then come back and, and adjust, but I'm with you. I'm just, I'm not comfortable yet on taking that away from the voters.
Yeah, same here.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the SB 2 happened because the people voted it in, right? Not, no, no longer will 30 people decide what's gonna happen in Nottingham, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
So if, if we gotta have this in, I could, let's do it. If you don't come with a mask on or follow the uh guidelines that Bonnie lays out, then you know what? They can, they can stand outside. There'll be a speaker out there or something. I mean, it's, it is what it is. We're not out of this thing yet, so, I mean, I see Nottingham's nu- numbers going up every day as well, so. But I, I wear a mask or whatever. I'm, I'm fine with it. Let's have it.
But I, but I think postponing's not a bad idea, frankly. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know. Uh, maybe I'm optimistic, maybe I'm crazy, but I think that we're gonna be in a better position in April or May. So, so to Bonnie's point, you know, I, I think it's difficult to think about, you know, what it's gonna be like in February, March, but I'm optimistic in thinking April or May we would be better. Um, so that's kind of the compromise that I think I'm leaning towards right now.
Yeah. Maybe actually, is, is there any way we could take the election of officers out of this and have it, whether we have by mail or before this happens? Because we wouldn't want anybody to have an extra day or two on this board or any other committee in town, because that wouldn't be right. Right? That's what it sounds like to me. That's what people are concerned about is if the election uh gets pushed back a week or two, that, that wouldn't be right, so.
What difference would it make, though, Tyler, really?
I, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's the feedback I'm seeing.
I'm just asking, like, wh-what would be, what would be the harm in somebody being in, in office oh four weeks later than the date? Because what are they gonna impact in four weeks that they wouldn't have impacted already?
Three years, yeah.
Yeah.
Who was up last year?
You.
What's that?
Who and I got re-elected last year, so this year it's Tyler and Ben.
Oh, okay, okay. Now, I was gonna say, what did, what did we do in the interim between uh January and town meeting?
We had the election of officers.
No, right, right. I'm just saying, like, what did, what did Donna and I do that was, you know what I mean? I'm, I'm, you know, trying to, trying to illustrate her point.
Probably nothing effective, Tony.
Yeah, I don't wanna put it that way, but, but, yeah.
You know, the other thing too, you know, that makes me wanna lean towards postponement is that, you know, while we have uh, you know, a technological solution available, it's, it's only partial. Um, you know, we can't vote electronically. There's nothing in the law that allows us to do that. Um, you know, and, and again, you know, I think somebody else brought up that, you know, there are uh people in town who don't have uh internet capabilities, you know, young and old families. Um, and we don't yet have the capability to simulcast uh these meetings over the television. Um, so, you know, all of those scenarios disenfranchise somebody.
Only one of them does. That's right.
Right. And I really wanna, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not comfortable being in the position of, you know, picking who is disenfranchised the least. You know what I mean? That, I'm uneasy with that.
But we're, don't we kind of have to?
So what do you mean, John? Somebody's gonna be
Well, if somebody doesn't have internet, I mean, just because out of 6,000 people in town or 4,000 registered voters in town, if 100 don't have internet, we stop the whole process because of 100 people?
Well, it, it deprives them of their, their right to participate in government. I, I would say that, at the very least, that's a 14th Amendment issue. 13th and 14th Amendment issue. Uh, I'm not a legal scholar, but if I remember my amendments correctly, those two would be of concern, so.
But a, of those 100 people, I mean, really, is there not a way they can't find the internet through somebody's phone, through
A library.
Member's house, or, I mean, something that's, I mean, we're
Can I, can I just
Will it diligence on their own if they wanna participate in order to help? Because we could say we could have the meeting at the, at the thing, but if no one's there to, to drive them to get there, do we count those people out because they can't get there? Or is somebody gonna help them and say, oh, you don't have the internet? Well, here's a computer. Here's a place you can go to get internet and watch the meeting. Just like if you couldn't drive there, somebody's gonna offer, oh, I'll take you there to go vote. I'll take you there. So you can't really count those people out. I mean, they can find a way to do it. And I'm not trying to sound heartless. I'm just trying to point out there is that I don't wanna just go not making a decision, but go, Bonnie, sorry.
That's okay. Um, I'm, I'm just gonna kind of underline what you've said by saying that. I, I talked to the Attorney General's office from time to time. They don't have any concern about the virtual procedure disenfranchising anybody. They don't have any concern about any of these procedures disenfranchising anybody. I do, and people I talk to do. Um, but it's not, it's not, given the, given the public health crisis that we're in, it's not a question that concerns them particularly. I don't think they think any of this is unconstitutional, or that anybody's rights are being um, unduly stepped on.
So how many people did we have at town meeting?
Do you know? Do, I think it was like 120 or 40?
Um, town, the town meeting that we had in, in the summer?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yeah.
Um, it was, it was a large number. It was, we were, we were pushing 200.
So do we really think we would get more than that at a deliberative session? And, and so do we not think that we could handle that kind of social distancing again?
That's a question for Chris that I, he and I have already talked about. It's doubtful that we would fit in that gym.
I think that we're, we're likely to have a large number turn out for deliberative session this year, since it's the first year since we've gone from a regular town meeting. That's just my, my sense.
But you think, you think more than 200?
I don't, no, I don't, I, I would be very surprised, given the current circumstances, if we got to 150.
So that, that would be about the size of town meeting that we have.
No, to, our town meetings have been, you know, 125-ish for a number of years. We had a large number this year because we had some big things like SB 2 that were being debated.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all, all I'm trying to understand, and I'm certainly not criticizing anybody in any way. I'm just trying to understand, like, if we handled it in June that way, what's the risk of us trying to handle it again that way? And, and I guess the question would be, do we have the authority? I mean, the one difference is, we did have a section for people who didn't wanna wear masks at that meeting. Do we have the leeway to say, and this, this, Bonnie, again, is probably a good question for the state, do we have
Already, I've already asked the Attorney General, and he basically has, not Mr. McDonald himself, but he, um, Nick Chong Yan basically has said, yes, we can make them wear masks.
Okay.
Will they say that in June? I don't know. They didn't say it last June.
Okay, so we, whether we, the select board, or we, you, has the authority to say, yes, we're gonna hold it in person, we're gonna delay it, and we're gonna require that people wear masks?
I believe, from what I've heard, that, this is providing that the, you know, the virus is still rampaging.
Correct.
And that public health measures are still in place. I believe that I can and you can. And I think it would be best uh that, that we were on the same page about that if it happens.
Yes, no, I agree.
You hear me?
And not to mention, um, Donna, the other thing too is, remember with these meetings, we don't have everybody there for the entire time. The, the, the number kind of waxes and wanes. So we may get 200 people that check in, but there's, there was never that many people in the gym at one time.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I understand.
So that helps, that helps that number, you know, as far as, you know, being able to be distant, in my mind, a little bit more.
Yeah.
And I think having the ability to put some of them outside, like we did in June, makes it even better.
I mean, so I, you know, I wouldn't say that this is a definitive position on my part, but what I'm thinking about right now is we, we try to postpone that we hold it in person and that we require masks based on the situation at the, at the point in time.
But are you comfortable with the separate areas like we did last time? A section for the non-mask wearers?
I'm not. I'm not, and I'll tell you why.
Why if we were
We know a lot more now than we did.
Not if we require everybody to make, to wear masks, Tony. If we have that authority.
Yeah.
We require that, then we don't need a separate section.
Right.
Right, but the separate room for people that do wanna wear masks but don't wanna be in the crowd.
Yeah.
Like we did last time.
Sure, we could do that too.
We just did that because we needed that space.
Yeah, yeah.
Period. And we also had an outside setup, somehow Chris rigged up.
Yeah.
Had like micro, not microphones, but had some kind of viewing place outside and hearing place.
So one question, Bonnie. If we said we wanna postpone until, I'm just throwing a date by example, if we said we wanna postpone until May 1st, and we've, we got to the point where May 1st things were looking worse than they are now, do we then have the second options to say, okay, no, we're gonna postpone to June 15th?
Yeah, I can, I can postpone it as long as I think it's dangerous.
Okay.
And I, I need to do it in concert with the other, with the relative, um, with the officers that are have something to do with it, like you, like the selectman.
Okay.
Like uh the town clerk, like the police department.
Got it.
Police department for this. That'd be more a weather thing.
Yeah.
I think really the select board and I should be on the same page about it, although the authority to postpone is, rests in me.
Okay.
I read the law.
Bonnie, have you, have you heard from any other towns what they're gonna do?
Well, your town administrator sent me a, a handy little newspaper article that was in the Concord Monitor yesterday or today. Um, there are some towns around here, like Newmarket, that are you, doing the virtual. Some towns that are going forward this winter with an in-person. I don't have any, you know, any, any other information other than that, and it's pretty general. I mean, we're at the point where we now basically know enough to make a decision. We had to wait for some certification of the law from um, the people who read it and translate it for us.
But every town is struggling in the same way we are, Bonnie, right?
Oh, I'm sure they are. I'm sure they are.
So it's not just an inability of this board and you to make a decision, or anybody pushing, pushing personal agendas. It's that, there's a lot of
There's a lot of pros and cons to both. There's a lot of details to both. There's a lot of procedure to amend with both.
Yeah.
And um, I, I see, you know, as the person who is kind of at the top of this little group of people who run elections, that the virus right now is way worse than it was last spring in terms of numbers. Um, we're in the, the middle of a surge that's post Thanksgiving, and by the end of January, we're gonna be in a surge that's post Christmas, New Year's, I believe. So I think that then, that to hold one in person, uh, you know, not That to hold one in person, uh, you know, not, I'm not criticizing any other town, but I think to hold an in-person meeting at the end of January is really. Dangerous. And I, I personally won't do it.
Bonnie, how do you?
Not that I would stop the town from doing it, you know, but I would appoint somebody else to do it.
Postponing, and if we said that we're gonna postpone till. You know, April or to March or whatever, how would you feel about that?
I, I think, I think you should think about two things if we do that, and that is to postpone it to a time when the weather would allow us to go outside if it's still dangerous. If it's still like it is now. Even being in the gym would not be smart. But being outside is much safer.
Okay.
So we have like a drive-in town meeting. I mean, we talked about that last year and never got it. Together, but the numbers now are, are way worse.
What are we gonna do about?
So Bonnie. Again, just so that people that are listening, um, understand. That we would not be having our elections of officers and other things in March. Because now that we're SB two, everything will be postponed until a later date if this gets postponed.
Um, I can postpone it to a later date and will, however, I think I was asked tonight as part of this conversation to check with the Attorney General's office and see. If we can hold a meeting, I'm Tyler, I think brought it up. So I think that's a question we should explore and, you know, are there. Advantages to the town to have a dual. We, we, we two polling times. I don't, I don't see that it's delineated in the law, but sometimes.
Just. The reason that I'm asking is the filing period. For the March town meeting for people to file to run for office starts on. Um, January twentieth. So if we are going to move, if, if we are able to move forward with that piece. Then, you know, the, the filing period is, is coming right up and. I think it's something that we need to know as, as soon as we can.
I don't think the filing period would change. Dee?
Okay.
I don't think it would. I think it would.
So we would still do the fi, the filing period the way it is and anybody that signs up during the, the last week of January. It, everything would just get pushed off to whenever we have it, if we can't have it in March.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm gonna ask them, I'm gonna ask them if we can do the election of officers and other things that are not debated, like I don't know if we have zoning. Amendments or zoning articles on this warrant. On this ballot. Anybody here from the planning board?
Yes, we are expecting that.
Okay, so Chris, you would know. Yes, we do, says Joanna. In the chat, she's the Land use clerk, so she knows what everybody's doing. So we could vote on those and the election of officers if it's allowed, and I, I honestly just don't know. These are cuckoo times, but I will ask Nick Chung Yan.
Honey, can I ask a question for the school board? Um, if we determine that we can't delay it as long as the town might delay it. Is it possible to do two elections then? Um, how does that work?
It is my understanding that it is, but I wouldn't rest on my word. I haven't been to law school. I would check with your school attorney. I know you guys are, have good counsel. And then your bond attorney. And see if, if that would impact you adversely to postpone it.
Yeah, we will check on that. I'm just wondering the logistics of if we have to have two separate. Elections, I guess it just means we have to do.
Yeah, I would, I would imagine, and I'm just throwing this out, that then you would be responsible for paying for them. If they weren't, I mean, I think the town pays for your elections now. I don't really know. I, I have nothing to do with anybody's budgets, but I do know that we run the election for you guys. And, um. If you ran your own election, I, I don't think it's against the law. Um, it would just be a separate event and. Probably that's between you and the select board. I'll be quiet on that question, but. Would seem that would be your expense, not ours.
Hey Carol, can I ask a question? Um, would you, would the timing not work out for you because of? Some specific mandated times you have to meet or just because of your desired schedule for the, for the bond? And where the people that you have lined up related to work that you want to do relative to that?
I think we have to find out from bond counsel if we can delay it. Um, we didn't ask that question yet.
I don't want to sound negative, but what if you're, what if it doesn't pass?
Well, then, obviously it doesn't. We can't do a second vote on it this year. We'd have to leave.
So I mean, I'm not, again, not trying to sound negative, but we're putting a lot of emphasis on that it's gonna pass. I mean.
No, I mean, I think it's just a question of can we, it's a different statute for the bonds and then we don't know if we can delay it or not.
Well, but the deadlines are all relative to when the vote is, right?
And honestly, if, 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 if a meeting were postponed for any other reason. There must be a way that you can work around it because. The moderator can postpone any voting. I mean, for good cause. Not because I want to go to Jamaica or anything like that, but. So there must be a provision. But anyway, maybe, maybe you should, maybe the school board should discuss that.
We will.
And with your attorney and get back to the select board before.
Well, I just want to throw out there that I would hope that we could come to an agreement that we're not gonna put people in Bonnie through two separate whole. Processes for voting. Cause I, I don't think that would be fair to Bonnie or the election workers or to the townspeople.
There's a lot about the last year that hasn't been fair, but hey. Sometimes we have to deal with strange things. You know, I'd prefer, I'm sure we would all prefer to have it in one. In the same event as we always do. But we could, you know, we could do that if you did end up doing that, we could. Use school board members as, as election workers, for example. We, you would still need the supervisors of the checklist there. You would still need. I don't know if your clerk would replace the town clerk. That's a question for your lawyer. I, I can't answer it. If, um, if we're not, because basically we run your election and we use all the town officers. Supervisors are the, are the, have to be present if there's a checklist in use.
Correct.
There has to be some kind of clerk. There has to be a moderator. And probably, well, the selectmen are required to be. At elections and I don't know if the school board is, if you were to run your own meeting, because we've. I've never, never run a meeting just for the school, I mean, a election, a polling day just for the school. I know that school board members have helped us when we. We've had issues in the past, like one year we had to. Photocopy ballots because we ran out. That was a bad year. And then the clerk of the, of each governing body has to sign every one of those ballots. So there's a lot of questions. But the easiest thing for, for the workers would be for the town and school to do the same thing on the same day, except a deliberative, of course. Has to be separate.
So what do you need tonight? What do we need tonight? So we've, we've kind of talked about the options, that, you know, a couple of us have expressed our opinions. What do we need? To come away from the meeting with tonight?
Um, you need, you probably ought to, you probably ought to focus in on whatever your deadline is and try to get this decided. Before it's too late to send out notices, because if you, if you were, for example, to pick virtual. Every voter has to be notified and they can be notified on the same. Piece of paper, you know, but in different sections.
Yeah.
In the same envelope with the same stamp that can be coordinated with the town and the school.
Right, but they need to be notified a minimum of seven days prior to the meeting. And the supervisors have to have time to. Hold a session to make sure that everybody that wants to be registered is registered. So that we have a clean list so that we can produce that. Um, and I ran that list today and it comes out as labels. So, um, we could send the PDF of labels to someone if we. You know, had a company do them, but it's not gonna be a mail merge, it's gonna be the actual labels.
So Dee, let's back, let's back out the timeline. Um, I think the deliberative session dates were different for the school and for the town, right?
Of course, I can't be in two places at once.
Yeah, they, they are, but we are planning on doing, holding all of our sessions. At the same time because they fit within our window, so we can do everything.
They're very close together, like February second is January thirtieth.
January thirtieth is the first date, right? So that would mean one week, it's a journey to January, January thirtieth is when, when voters would have to have the. The mailer.
The notices in hand.
Okay, so that should be, they have to have them by January twenty-third, right?
Right. And remember, they're not staying in town necessarily. A lot of people have addresses outside of.
Feeling would have to be like January sixteenth.
That's, that was my date exactly, yes.
Okay, so January sixteenth is.
Saturday.
Ten days from now.
Yep.
Right, so, so that means that, and, and then there's that lead time of needing for the. Printing for the, you know, getting it to the mailhouse.
Not to mention, we have to have a session and we have to post it. And we have a, we have to post it within forty-eight hours before, um, before the session.
Yep, so my, so my guess is if we had to have it in the mail on the sixteenth. We would want to have it to a mailhouse by the. Twelfth. Is based on my experience in the past, that's when we would have to have it to the mailhouse.
And you probably have to give them a heads up.
Yeah, 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 obviously, yeah. But so that would mean they're, uh, Dee handing everything over to them. Which is already, you know, y, y, you are already, you'd have to post your time tomorrow.
Correct.
Yeah.
Wednesday at the latest.
Yeah.
It, it because we would probably have to do it either Friday or Monday.
So it, it's already an impossible schedule to try and meet.
It's tight, yeah.
Can I, can I speak to that point though, Donna? I do believe that we do not have to keep to the January thirtieth date if we went virtual. I had that piece of discussion with Nick Chung Yan already.
Okay.
We can change it, but then when we do that, it messes up all the things the supervisors have to do. It does, they.
It's gonna be inconvenienced no matter what.
Inconvenience, but they have to, they're, they're dealing with the law.
But.
Not an inconvenience, it's, it's a requirement.
However you want to think about it, right, but I understand it's. Out of the norm.
But that's a good point, Bonnie. Like if we said, okay, we're gonna push that January thirtieth date out to. Um, you know, January to February twelfth, that does. Give us two more weeks. That makes that whole time, you know, chain of events more doable.
So Bonnie. Um, the law for deliberative session. Um, if we did our March date. Um, is very clear on how much lead time there needs to be for that. So when you say we could change that date.
We can change.
What's that?
I think we can change them both.
Okay, that was, that was my question. We can change them both.
You're getting that, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we were advised that if we keep the regular voting day in March, we have to stay within the one week. Or so timeframe for deliberative.
Right.
But if we move the March voting date, then you can move the deliberative.
Okay, yeah, all right. Yeah, that gives us a lot more time to pull all of these things together if, if that's a decision that's made. To go virtual.
I, I don't know if we can. Both go virtual and. Move the March date. And I don't think you can do both of those things together. If you go, if you go virtual through eleven twenty-nine. You, you need to stay in the ten-day deliberative window. And hit the March election date.
Eleven twenty-nine is not super clear.
Is, is, is there, uh, the, the select board, you, you did not seem inclined to. Pursue this, uh, remote deliberative session, at least those of you that opined on it, um. The, the calendar really only changes if you pursue that one. If you don't, then we have. Pretty straightforward understanding. We stick with the original dates or we push like we did in twenty twenty. Um. So if, the only thing that has a real hard deadline, I think, is. A go decision on, on remote deliberative and, and using HB eleven twenty-nine. If, if you. Don't do that, then you, you don't have to rush into a decision, right? Making sense?
All right, so I'm just gonna throw it out there for the purposes of seeing if we can move this forward. I'm in favor of. Pushing the date and trying to do it in person like we did last year with, with the, uh, proper precautions. Necessary that the select board mandates masks. That's, that's my position.
Oh, basically your, your position is postponing it?
Yes.
We can postpone it, right? Bonnie's the only one that can postpone it.
Well, nice to me, I might do it though. Just kidding, just kidding.
I just, that was my opinion that I put out there.
No, it's true that, that, you know, the virtual choice is this, belongs to the governing body, the postponement belongs to the moderator. But as I said at the beginning, I'm happy to work with. Whatever we as a group think is the best route for the town to take. The, the repercussions of what we choose are not necessarily mine. I mean, some of them will be, but the ones that go on forever will be, belong to you all.
My question is if we both, let's say we do postpone. How much are we schooling up the school?
That's a question we don't know until they meet and get back to you. I would hope. They would do that quickly. Carol, can you speak to that or Sue?
Yeah, we're hoping to know by our meeting on Wednesday because. Um, our understanding is if we want to do the virtual option, we'd have to make that decision in this week. We, right, we don't have time to delay that, so. We're gonna try to get an answer by before Wednesday.
You might want to get an answer from your. About postponement too and what that may or may not do to you.
Right, and we had already talked about the virtual option, but we didn't talk about postponement.
Yeah, you, you were not impacted last year because you. Your deliberative was before the voting. Right, we got through the voting, we just postponed the town meeting last year. Quite a while.
So by postponing, we're gonna be postponing. The deliberative session and the vote.
So, so can I just, before we answer that question, John, so I, I threw myself out there and I, I gave my opinion. I'd like to hear. The other members of the board throw out their opinion as well.
Yeah, I'd be, am I unmuted? Yes, I am. Um, yeah, I'm. Leading towards postponing as well simply because. Um. Like I said, the, the technological solution is. It's convenient, but it's incomplete and it's gonna, I think it's gonna disenfranchise too many people.
Well. Can't say I'm a big fan about postponing it. Um. You know, I, I'm not, I don't, not comfortable with the virtual doing it that way. It's not how something I want to be done. Especially with some of the warrant articles that are up there. I want to make sure people get to understand what they are. Um, and talk about them, who wants to talk about them. No, I'm not opposed to a full meeting, even though I know that's. Not recommended. So I'd probably lean postponing only to the fact that we could have a full meeting. Where people could discuss some of these warrant articles.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I want, I want the people to be able to participate. In what they, you know, it affects them, so. Whether that be we have to postpone it or somehow miracle we could do it on time or whatever, let the people decide.
Cause if we did do virtual, I mean, I wouldn't make any amendments to any of the warrant articles. Let them sit as the way they are and get voted on that way. I don't know if that's possible, but.
That was, that was my struggle too, John.
You know, just how it's written, how it stays, let it fly and see how people vote on it.
So I think, so.
There's no need for a deliberative session since we're not gonna change any warrant articles.
So I, so I think what we've heard is that the opinion of the members of the board who are here is that we would be in favor of. Delaying to the point where we can have an in-person deliberative session. And in, in-person voting. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that's the riskier option, but. I don't. I don't think we have a lot of viable alternatives.
So, so Bonnie, that's our opinions.
So that's your opinions and, um, that would include also postponing the voting. Obviously. And what about the school board's needs? Are you willing to reconsider if they can't postpone or you want to run two separate elections?
Personally, I would wanna know what the implications or what the factors are in why they can't postpone. I would wanna understand the details behind that. I, I, you know, I, I, I get if there are different technical requirements, that would make it necessary, but I think we as two boards have to come together and make this as seamless um, and consistent as possible for the voters.
Yeah, and you know, they, they need to have their discussion about it, so I, you know, I think we, you know, we should give them that chance to talk about it at their Wednesday meeting and then, you know, you know, then, then move from there, cross that bridge when we, when we come to it.
It just, one of the warrant for the school is gonna be about the new addition, right?
One, one warrant article is the bonds, one of the other unusual.
We're talking millions of dollars being spent for us not to have, I mean, that's a tough one, I mean, not to have a, especially where people can voice their opinions. I mean, just for them to voice their opinions, even though when people vote, that's what's really gonna make the decision, but you know, I don't think people's opinions at these deliver sessions personally make a real too much of a difference on things. Again, that's my opinion, uh, but I understand the necessity of having them. So do we wait on a decision to what the school board says? We have a final decision on Monday for the people on which way we're gonna go, either postponement or virtual.
Hey Chris, are we meeting next Monday? I can't remember.
Yes, you are.
So can we reconvene with the school board next Monday?
Yes, uh, the, the, if, if they're all gonna join, they'll have to make it an actual meeting of their own, but, um, yeah, we would hopefully get, um, uh, an answer from them this week so that you could make a final decision on the eleventh, at least about virtual. If you want virtual, we have to say yes to that on, on the eleventh. Uh, we need to get at least that far, I, it would really be easier if we just got to a final answer a week from tonight though. With the school board's thoughts coming this week.
So that being said, we will go ahead as supervisors and just post our, post a session. Whether we need it or not, it will have it on the books, it'll be done and that way, whatever you guys decide, whichever you do, it will be covered that way, um, no matter what.
And just to be clear, the school board is not, again, as we all know, is, is a whole different entity from the, from the V O S. So, you know, we have to contain that option of whether, if they wanna do virtual and we still wanna go our way, that's still an option of us postponing. It's not the best way to do it, but that still is an option, right?
Yes.
So, c- c- can I speak for a second here, John?
Sure.
Well, there are a lot, there, I don't know if any of you have been monitoring the chat.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I, I keep seeing the question, would I be comfortable running a meeting sometime in May in the school the way we did last year? And my answer to that is, I was not comfortable with the way we did it last year, I don't think it was safe. So, uh, provided, which we, I've already discussed with the board here tonight, provided that if the virus is still, um, a threat, if everyone who participates is required to wear a mask, then, and we had room to socially distance people.
When you're talking about meetings, you're talking about voting, right?
No, I'm talking about the deliberative session.
Everybody gathered in the gym is what she's talking about, John.
Likely chance that we were gonna get something, but, okay.
Then I would be comfortable with it, you know, if we're in a si- a similar situation to now. But again, that's not really a question I can answer until we get closer to May, because who knows what the, what the public health situation will be. I'm beca- I am in favor of utilizing all of the precautions that the public health experts tell us to do. And that has so far included wearing masks. So I don't, I don't think it should be a political issue, it somehow became a political issue. Um, but if that's their recommendation and we do that, um, if it's still warranted, then, then I would be comfortable.
Bonnie, if. The select board has the authority to require people to wear masks.
Yes.
Then I support that.
Thank you, and I do too, I, I have the authority and you have the authority. And if we both are on the same page, that's fine, because I believe, I know of several elderly people who did not come to that last meeting because it was not safe for them.
So, but, so I, so I said that, but we gotta make sure that Tyler, John and Tony, we, we need to hear what they have to say about that.
Yeah, I wear a mask everywhere I go, I'm not opposed to it. If you wanna come join, if you don't wanna wear a mask, tough. There you go.
Tony, Tyler?
Amy.
Tony.
Tony's on mute. Digital question.
Wait, wait, can we have, can we just, I just wanna make sure we've got all our bases covered here, we didn't hear Tony. Tony, would you support a mandate if the select board has the authority, would you support a mandate from the board that everybody wears a mask?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of that, I mean, I've got medically fragile people at home, so I have to protect them by not getting sick myself. And I, I know some people see that as an impingement on their, their freedoms, but out of a, you know, out of a sense of looking out for your, for your, for your neighbor, you know, your, your, your fellow citizen, i- it's not a huge sacrifice to, I don't think, to, to wear masks so that we can all have the opportunity to participate in deliberative session to the, to the utmost of our ability. So yes, I'm in favor of that.
Lorraine, you have something to say?
I, yes, I'm wondering about people who wish to sign up for open positions and submit warrant articles, things like that, there are certain dates they have to meet. Will they still be meeting those dates as they stand now? No matter when we have the deliberative or the, you know, election day?
Yes, Chris, right?
Yes, the, I, I think our, our intention would be to stick to every legal calendar wherever we can unless we can't. Uh, that would be.
Okay.
Filing the, the budget postings, the budget hearings, a- all of it, and I, I presume the school board would be the same way given their bond requirements.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, we, we have no authority to bend the calendar except where it's been specifically given to us, um, and that, the, those dates haven't moved.
Any more discussion?
Not, not for me.
You wanna open this up to the public comment? Let's open it up for the public comment, but we have other things to discuss tonight, so please, guys, anybody who wants to say something, let's not have any repeat questions and anything like that. So, I can't see who's opening up, but however you wanna handle that, Tony.
Wanna have people raise hands, Tony?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm just looking to see where do I, where do I see those raised hands? I'm not seeing any yet.
Under participants, Tony, open your participants, um, list.
Yeah, yeah, no, I've got my participant list open, I'm just.
Nobody has their hand raised.
Nobody has their hand raised yet. All right, go ahead, Gene.
Thank you. Good discussion, everybody, I know you're really up against it, this is unprecedented and, uh, thank you all for participating. I just posted and I'd like you to consider Bon- for Bonnie and, and some of us other people, that we could do a pre-screening upon entrance if it comes to an in-person meeting with a simple non-touch uh, thermometer, which is being used by doctors' offices as I've experienced, and the, the standard questions upon pre-entering as an additional, uh, factor for the in-person meeting. I think, uh, postponing unfortunately might have to happen, and I appreciate the board's concern about the voters, also known as the, uh, the legislative body should have a say along the way, thank you.
Can I speak, can, can I ask Dee to speak to that? I don't think, I think there are certain things we're not allowed to do, Jean, do you know Dee? We're not allowed to take people's temperature, or are we?
We're not.
I didn't think so, so we do have restrictions, Jean, in terms of determining, we can't ask certain questions?
We can't ask any of the, put the script, pre-screening, pre-screening questions, and we cannot take temperatures.
Oh, wow, uh, well, might that change, is it worth asking the attorney or the A G of? I'm, I'm not pushing it, but it's a consideration, I'd like you to consider it too, if that's the final answer, that's the final answer, thank you.
I'll ask the Attorney General, Jean.
Thank you.
That's the best.
Anyone else?
So I'll just, um, speak as a, as an individual, not a supervisor for the moment, that I, would prefer a, a, a delay in the process, um, and postponing it to another time. Both for the election officers and workers, uh, and also because the, the numbers are, you know, creeping up so, so much in town and all around us, that I think that that's the, the prudent thing for us to do.
Alright, is there anything else anybody wants to add to this?
Can, can I just say that, um, if we do end up postponing, if it, if it's the path chosen by the two governing bodies or even this one, that we, we have to postpone it to a day and time certain, and that will not get us into any trouble with the Attorney General's office. Even though the law says in seventy-two hour, we have to do it in seventy-two hours, they already have play, a printed guidance about it last spring, apparently, which Nick Chong Yan said is still in effect. And that they also will be mentioning that in their guidance, which will be coming out probably at the last minute, we usually don't get these things in time to really prepare sadly. It's not his fault, but everything, all the guidance that's prepared has to be, excuse me. Sorry, that was Patrick calling me. He has the dog barking, ringing my phone. That we're already covered for that, so we can do it even though the legislature hasn't changed the law.
So Bonnie, to make clear, what you just said is that if we decide to postpone and we make that decision on Monday, next Monday at that meeting, we have seventy-two hours from that time to give a firm date of when the meeting will be postponed to.
No, what I meant, John, was, um, we determine as a, as the leaders of our town that it's unsafe to hold a public in-person meeting. And that I, as the moderator, therefore, change the date of our deliberative session to such and such a date and such and such a time, and the same for the, for the polling. Such and such a time after that deliberative session. So, if you read the law, it says that we're required to postpone it for no more than seventy-two hours. But that, then we can go in and do it, we can do it in seventy-two hour increments, but the Attorney General has determined that we can, yes, postpone it in seventy-two hour increments or fractions thereof to a date and time certain, so we don't have to do it every three days, we don't have to make a, a notice every three days. Does that make sense now?
We can say we're postponing it until April thirtieth.
Right, we'd probably better pick May first, cause that's a Saturday.
Whatever the date is, as long as we specify a date, we don't have to keep doing it every seventy-two hours.
Exactly, a date and time and place.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then I don't believe, I, 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 I think we should look into whether we have to notify every voter of that. Do you think we do, Dee?
So that is not the way I read the law, uh, House Bill, um, venue.
We didn't.
No, a- and this, some of this stuff came out after the, the whole thing that we did last year. But eleven twenty-nine talks about notifying voters in per, uh, by mail, if we do the virtual option. It doesn't say anything about notifying people, um, notifying voters, uh, if we choose any other option. So I think, you know, putting it on the po- on the, the website and the other places and, you know, splitting it in the newsletter, uh, the town newsletter, so it goes to all voter, to all residents, is probably, you know, all we really need to do.
So the other option is not covered in eleven twenty-nine, it's covered in chapter forty, colon, four, Roman numeral two. And I, I think you're right, I don't think it says anything about notifying, but I think we should review it, maybe Chris could do that. He and I were talking about that law the other day, a few days ago.
What's the law again, Bonnie?
The, it's, it's chapter forty, colon, four, Roman numeral two. It's the law that gives the moderator the authority to postpone meetings.
Okay, I knew I read it recently, I just couldn't remember what, which one it was, so, okay.
So, and then in the meantime, I'm gonna run this notion by the Attorney General's office to make sure that we can postpone both, the polling and the meeting.
Any more comments? So hopefully everybody will have a decision made on Monday.
But this has been helpful, Bonnie, I know it's a challenge and a, a difficult thing for you to try to manage and for you and Chris to weigh through and, and for Dee as well, but school too, but I think it's a good thing, working towards trying to keep everybody's best interests in mind.
Certainly a process. A new process.
Well, that's the thing, and a moving target, right, where everybody is learning it on the fly, changes day to day.
Right, and we, we get guidance on it, like, you know, every few days, things change or they get expounded on a little more. So, I think I'm, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with, um, whatever you choose. And we'll play it by ear as the, as the, if we postpone, we'll know more like what we're dealing with sometime in April.
So with that being all said, if anybody else has nothing to add, I will close this section of the meeting. And we'll move on to our next agenda item of the, uh, budget warrants.
Alright, so you, uh, you have your meeting on the eleventh, uh, to finalize anything, there's nothing that we absolutely need to do tonight, um, the town portion of the public hearing is a week from Thursday, so we'd really like to get to, um, you know, final, final approval from you, uh, on the operating budget and the other warrant articles. What I've given you, uh, this week is a, a draft of the warrant itself, uh, based on the information that we talked about last week. Obviously, everything's in flux in terms of the dates and the methods, but, uh, the content is as, as you, uh, saw last week. The only open issues, uh, that I'm aware of are, uh, finalizing the operating budget, determining if you're gonna use fund balance to pay for any of the appropriations that you're asking for, and your recommendations on the various warrant articles that have appropriations. So those, those are the last three things for you to do, uh, and, and none of them have to be done tonight, if you wanna tackle any of those three, you are welcome. and, and none of them have to be done tonight. If you wanna tackle any of those three, you are welcome to. But we do need to have it done by next week so that, well, we can walk into the, uh, Budget Committee on the fourteenth, uh, ready to go.
So I'm just to maybe change things up for a second here, um, and go back to the warrant articles in one second. Does anybody have any question on the Avatar proposed contract? That's the next item, but I just wanna feel something out.
Um, I had just one or two questions.
I just wanna see if one thing's gonna be quick and we can get it done, and we can go to the other one and go back to the warrant articles, or?
Yeah, no, on the, um, on the contracts, I, I mean, overall, it was fine for me. The, the one question that I had, Chris, is like, are you guys clear and comfortable with the delineation between what they do administratively and what Kelly does administratively? Or someone from the office, if it's not Kelly, does administratively?
Yeah, it's, this contract has always been kind of wanting in that regard, um, in not being really specific about it. Uh, with this particular vendor, uh, we are comfortable with it in that we've, we've got a good, uh, a good practice and a good understanding in, in practice of what we're doing. Uh, and they've also been flexible when, you know, we've had vacancies in this slot a couple times in the last few years, and they've, uh, they've been willing to step in and, and pick up a little bit more at times, uh, to help us get everything done, so. Um, it is a, it's a, a fair criticism of the contract because some of that contract language is uses things like customarily done by and things like that. And I wouldn't always be comfortable with that, but with this vendor, we, we're, we're now on a, I think this is a, a nine-year relationship now. It's, it's working pretty well. So, uh, in this particular case, I am comfortable with it.
And, and what I'm asking is really, really nitty, um, gritty questions, but there was also something about meetings after seven PM being billed at a different, different hourly rate, and I don't ever recall that we've had to have meetings with them that late, so I, I guess that that's just a line where they're covering themselves, right?
Yeah, they're, they're watching out for, uh, things that, you know, small things that explode into massive commitments on their part. Um, so not, I mean, you've, you've had direct contract with our assessor, I think, once since the Board of Assessors went away a year ago, March, so a rarity, and, and not something we gotta bill for.
I'm good with it. Those were the only two things I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I was happy with it too. Satisfied with it.
Tyler, any comment?
Whoops, I, I'm fine with it.
Okay, so we're all fine with it.
Yeah. So Chris, what's the next step you need us to?
Uh, if you could just vote to approve it and then sign it on your next, uh, visit into the office, I can tell them that it's approved, and I just have to get them the documents. So if you just, uh, vote to approve as, you know, as distributed or whatever.
I'll make a motion that, uh, the Select Board approves the new Avatar contract, uh, as, um, as written.
Second. All right, got a motion in a second. All approved?
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Aye, Tyler Eaton.
Aye, John Warren.
And let's just, just for clarification, just for FYI, that contract takes, takes us through twelve thirty-one twenty-five.
To our next evaluation, right?
Yeah, correct.
Now, as towards the warrant articles, I mean, we've already went over these, so we already know what they basically are. Uh, and I read over them again today. What about, um, people's petitions, uh, articles?
Uh, we don't have any certified by the town clerk yet, and I know there's one that's uh, into her office, uh, but it hasn't come back to us as certified yet, so. Um, as soon as we get those, we'll add them to the warrant here.
Are there any of these articles that you wanna see on the screen here?
So I think the biggest question for you, Chris, is what do we want, what do we want to, um, i- is there anything that we wanna cover all the, under fund balance, right?
Yeah, and you, where you don't, we're gonna, we're gonna, we won't have a number for you. We just, obviously just closed the year, uh. We won't really have an estimate for you on what your fund balance is until your next meeting, uh, or maybe the end of this week. We've got one more, uh, run of bills to do at the end of this week, so. Um, you don't really know what your fund balance is, so it's, you know, it may not be fair to ask you if you wanna spend any of it. That's.
According to what the warrant articles are right now, we're looking at spending as the way it's written, you know, a little over two hundred thousand, right?
Yes.
From the fund balance.
Well, we haven't specified that though, right?
Well, we don't have never what the fund balance is, so we're get, or what we're getting, so.
Yeah.
In order to rationalize if that's enough to spend or not enough to spend.
So, so, um, so we know.
We know that. Do I get, do we?
We, we don't know it. We're only gonna be able to estimate it. Uh, we'll know, uh, we're gonna take really three numbers. Uh, we'll take our fund balance at January first. Uh, we'll take our actuals, uh, as of December thirty-first, compared to the budget, you know, what's our surplus, uh, and what's our revenue for twenty twenty? And, uh, we'll be able to see, those are the big changers, you know, things that will move the fund balance the most. So we'll, we'll take those three numbers, put them together and, and tell you how much the, the fund balance has changed since a year ago.
And then we'll be able to say, okay, this is how the warrant articles are gonna look and make that public.
Correct.
Okay, so decisions to be made tonight on this?
Or can't.
Okay, so, Chris, you're not expecting any decisions tonight on this?
No, unless you know, uh, you don't want something or, uh, you, if you want the order different, this is a good time to, you know, tinker with that kinda stuff.
So I'm okay with, I'm o- I'm, I'm good with what's here. I'm good with the, with the order of them. I have no questions or concerns around that. I just, I just wanna make the point that I think it's incumbent on the board to make sure that we recognize that we're going to have to do a bigger, um, educational process this year. Um, you know, regardless of whether our deliberative session is electronic or in person, I think we need to make sure that for each of the warrant articles here that we specifically outline, you know, the board's rationale and thinking on each of these, the, for ours, not, I'm not throwing the, um, petition ones in there. Um, and I, I think we figure out a way to utilize the, the website to provide that information.
Yeah, and if there's anything, um, I, I mean, given your discussions to this point, I, I'm assuming you're going to support these and recommend these. If there's, if, if that's not the case, uh, or if you need more information about any of them, um, you know, now's the time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee any changes. I mean, our, our budget was pretty conservative. I mean, these are, for the most part, these are our boilerplate, you know, our annual um, articles that we, you know, that we present to the town. You know, there's a couple of, you know, one-offs in here, the, um, kitchen renovation, for example, which, you know, we've discussed repeatedly as, as being necessary at this point. I mean, there's no, there's no, there's no pork fat in here, so I don't, I don't foresee any, anything being removed. Um, I think, uh, the big question for us is, what do we wanna use, um, against fund balance versus what do we wanna ask the taxpayers for?
Yeah, I'll agree with that. There isn't really anything in here that's out of the norm, you know? The big tickets item really is the truck.
Yeah, and, and do I remember right, there were, there were three things that we were considering for fund balance. The, um, the front-end loader, the kitchen renovation, and one other thing?
Is that it, Tony?
Well, just those two?
So, yeah.
Okay.
No, the Highway Department has a grader on there as a potential option to purchase, but that was taken off.
Okay.
One tracked it out.
Yeah, cuz both of those items are, are, aren't even gonna come close to, um, you know, depleting our fund balance, right? Or not depleting it, but it's, it's gonna be much smaller, so I mean, I'm, I, I'm, I mean, if we can talk about this now, I, I'd say I'm, I'm in favor of using fund balance for whatever we can, um, to lighten the load on the taxpayers this year, especially since, you know, the, the revaluation has, has hit a lot of families, uh, more than expected. I'd, I'd like to use the fund balance for both of those items.
I'll agree with that. Um, so, we should have this finalized to the public for next week?
Yes, you, you can, uh, you can finalize it. You don't have to post it, the, the legal, take the legal step of posting it, but you can finalize it for the purposes of handing it off to the Budget Committee. Uh, it's at that point, we would typically publish it, uh, as a draft until you post it, post it, but, um, it's, it's getting late to change anything after next week, so.
Well, it's not anybody's system change until after the deliberative session anyway, so it's more just to let people know what the warrant articles are as they read. But, okay.
Yeah, and if, and if anybody wants where you are now, we're certainly, we can certainly give it to them. It's just, it's just subject to change quite a bit, so.
Right, it's not finalized, it's just.
Right.
The draft.
Yes.
So we just don't want the public getting thought of, this is what it's going to be finalized, cuz we haven't finalized it. That's why we tend to not send it out, because we don't need things getting misconstrued. Um, all right, well, I'm good at that. Anybody else have anything on this?
Nope, I'm good.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right.
So just, just as a, a point of process, Chris, if somebody does want the draft in its current state just for their own edification, what's the right way to get it?
Just, just send me a note. I'll, I'll email it.
Okay.
It's the fastest.
Okay, well, that takes us out of our general business section, uh, of everything on there. Uh, we don't presently have any appointments. Um.
Do we have anything for non-public, Chris?
Right.
I don't.
Don't?
So, one last thing. Does anybody at this meeting have anything that the Board of Selectmen need to hear before we close this meeting out for the evening? Not hearing anything? Um, somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Uh, we'll go for a vote?
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Tyler Eaton.
Aye, John Warren.
Goodnight, guys.
Goodnight, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fun of him.
Stay healthy.